Very good. Let's call our meeting to order, our goal-setting meeting, and please rise with me as we salute our flag. Well, welcome, everybody. This is a very important meeting for us. This is where we're gonna work on setting our goals for next year. And for us, we look forward to this meeting so we have a little more relaxed discussion on where we would like to see things going. So with that, I would like to have our clerk call role, please.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamee.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones is absent. And Mayor Engler?
Here.
Very good. We do have one public comment, I believe, on items not on the agenda, so please, Madam Clerk, if you could announce that.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council only on issues listed on the agenda pursuant to the Brown Act. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has presented a speaker card and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Very good. I believe our speaker is online, Mr. Jonathan Bruner.
Mayor, he is not on.
He's dropped off.
That's correct.
Very good. So let's go with our study session, the purpose for our meeting tonight. I'll turn it over to Mr. Drew Powers.
Thank you so much, Mayor Engler. We've got masks on over here because tis the season I'm recovering from a head cold myself, so courtesy over here. Non-COVID, I can say for certain. Welcome. It's great to be here tonight, albeit a week delayed, here at the Grand Arboretum Hall Library. Nice to be back utilizing this room for its intended purpose of community gatherings. We've already had a few in the last few months. A special note of thanks to Melissa Hurtado, our City Clerk Office, TO TV, and all the supporting teams who helped to make this venue shift happen so quickly. It's no small feat when we're dealing with all the production, as you can see, to video this and distribute it out over the airwaves and also the virtual participation component, which is an added element. We actually had a performance tonight over at the Cavley, so that's why we had to make the shift here. Let's take a quick look at our agenda for the evening before we get started. I'm gonna provide you a brief workforce overview. We're gonna take a look at our priorities from '21, '22, and talk about the achievements there. Go through the priority-setting exercise for '22, '23, and then opportunity for closing comments. But before we begin in earnest tonight, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge our sensational city workforce. Through challenge after challenge over the past several years, this team has consistently risen to the occasion. Their professionalism, dedication, and innovative spirit make this community the special place that it is. And I would appreciate it if you could take just a moment to thank and acknowledge them really quickly. On that theme, I wanted to offer just a few thoughts regarding our workforce. As I've shared in various settings throughout the last year, we're experiencing many of the same employment dynamics that you read about in the headlines. That said, we have worked hard to maintain our status as an employer of choice with a commitment to modern workplace practices and robust succession planning. We've also had to become very, very agile in our recruitment efforts. In terms of where we are today, I wanted to share a couple of charts that show just how rapidly things have evolved over the past six years in our organization. Little bit tough to see there, but if you just pay attention to the larger color blocks, I want you to pay particular attention to the dark blue and the light blue. The left-hand side is 2016, the right-hand side is 2022. What those represent is the changing tenure within our organization. The dark blue was those with over 20 years of service, about 41% back in 2016. It's shrunk down about 25% in 2022. That tiny little sliver of light blue, less than two years, has rocketed from 1% to 13%. Then when you add on the two to five years, you see how that growth has really continued to intensify. As anticipated back in 2010 with our internal people strategy, we are experiencing a dynamic period of organizational change. Since 2020 alone, we've processed 181 entries into the organization and 157 exits. Each one of those is a pretty involved processing for our HR department and our finance personnel folks. Currently, we're running at about 30 vacancies, about half of which are in active recruitment. With all of this change, the importance of integrating these new hires into our workplace and adapting the workplace culture and practices to those that will soon make up the majority of our team cannot be understated. Our commitments to training, technology, professional development, equipment, workplace flexibility, and morale are more important than they've ever been from a recruitment and a retention standpoint. While we have been able to maintain our existing position count for over a decade, we will be taking a close look at future need as we enter next year's budget process. We are currently updating our long-term financial strategic plan, which will guide any recommendations that we eventually bring to the city council. With that, we'd like to provide you updates on last year's areas of priority focus. It has been a remarkably productive year, and we're excited to recap some of that success here tonight. This year, we will be having some of our subject matter experts from across the organization cover each priority area. We will have a chance for Q and A on any of our workforce items, any of the priorities, at the conclusion of our updates. We've got folks from across the organization here that should be able to answer any questions the council has. But with that, I'm gonna kick it off with an update on what landed at the top of council's list last year, which is a commitment to seizing the golden age of biotechnology. I'm exceptionally proud of our achievements in this area over the past year. Coming on the heels of Amgen's substantial on-campus investments, hundreds of millions of dollars, we now have over 400,000 square feet of new or renovated life science space in Thousand Oaks. It's important to note that these are largely retrofits of outdated office, manufacturing, and warehousing spaces. This building you're seeing up on the screen there at 1300 Rancho Canejo was a vacant, for almost a decade, manufacturing building. And it's now home to hundreds of new employees working for several biotech companies. From site selection, planning, and inspection standpoint, our team has worked closely with the developers to deliver these buildings to new companies on a timely basis this year, thus capitalizing on these watershed investments for our community. Significantly more is on the horizon, with more inquiries coming in through our Economic Development Office daily, as Economic Development Manager Hedo Awami can attest. We are clearly on the national and international radar now. Perhaps most notably, 1100 Rancho Canejo is a 20-plus-acre development site that used to be owned by Amgen and is now a forthcoming project from Alexandria to build 325,000 square feet of life science, fresh build, along with a food, beverage, and conference use. A landmark investment for Thousand Oaks, truly minting our region as one of the country's most important emerging biotech clusters. These investments are producing hundreds of new jobs and generating life-saving treatments benefiting society at large. We have a lot to be proud of here as a city and as a community. With those evolving uses comes the need to make targeted infrastructure improvements, and our Public Works team has led the way this past year in work to realign Lawrence and Teller intersection, with that work well underway, and to add sidewalks and crossings in selected areas to meet demand. Right now, I'd like to pass over the baton to Assistant City Manager Ingrid Hardy to talk a bit about homelessness.
Thank you, Drew. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. Good evening, Mayor Engler and members of the city council. I am pleased to provide you with an update on our efforts regarding homelessness in Thousand Oaks. Thanks to your leadership and direction, city staff have made demonstrable progress towards identifying and advancing solutions for emergency sheltering and permanent supportive housing to address homelessness. In alignment with your 2021, '22 adopted priorities, last summer, staff released an RFQ to find a qualified developer and operator to work with the city on identifying sites for emergency shelter and permanent supportive housing. The process yielded two well-qualified development teams, and in September of last year, the city council authorized staff to move forward with each of the teams we recommended. One of those teams is Shangri-La Industries, who is the developer, and Step Up on Second, who serves as the nonprofit operator. They have significant motel conversion experience, including first and second-round Home Key projects. As you may recall, last year, Shangri-La Industries entered into a purchase-and-sell agreement for the Quality Inn and Suites. With council's authorization earlier this year, the city, Shangri-La, and Step Up on Second submitted a Project Home Key grant application to request funding to convert the motel into housing for persons experiencing homelessness. If funded, the project will provide 77 units of housing with onsite wraparound services. A total of $8 million local dollars have been contributed to the project. This includes $1.8 million authorized by the city council, as well as $6.6 million in county funding. In addition, we've worked with the Park District, and they are going to waive $952,000 in Quimby fees, and the school district is also considering waiving the school facility fees. Staff and Shangri-La have been engaged in ongoing and active dialogue with the state on our application. As you can imagine, Project Home Key is a highly competitive process with multiple jurisdictions competing for a limited pot of funding. We hope to have a definitive answer on the status of our application in the coming weeks. In addition to our work efforts with Shangri-La, staff is also working with Mini Mansions on identifying a viable site that would provide a combination of emergency shelter beds as well as permanent supportive housing. As you're aware, there are a limited number of properties on the market. However, we continue to work in earnest with Mini Mansions on exploring all possible options and hopefully bringing forth a site for consideration to the city council. That concludes my presentation, and next, I'm gonna turn it over to our senior planner, Kristin Rice, to give you an update on the general plan.
Thank you, Ingrid, for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor Engler and members of the city council. Several project milestones have been completed during the past year for the Thousand Oaks 2045 General Plan Update. This project was initiated in February 2019, and since then, we have completed three of the five phases of the project, all with extensive public feedback and involvement. The first milestone completed last year was Phase Number Three, Plan Alternatives. The advanced planning team and our lead consultant, Raimi and Associates, held a series of community meetings to solicit public input and evaluate three proposed land use map alternatives. After compiling all the feedback, the alternatives were modified into one preferred land use map, which city council endorsed in May of last year. This is the first comprehensive update to the city's land use map in its history and is a significant achievement. This map is critical to the future of Thousand Oaks as it depicts the future intended use of every parcel in the city. The second milestone completed was the adoption of the new six-cycle housing element for 2021 to 2029. The housing element contains 17 programs and more than 40 objectives with specific deadlines and serves as the guide to meet current and future housing needs. The advanced planning team has already begun implementing several programs in the housing element. The team successfully prepared and solicited proposals for an update to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and Non-Residential Development Linkage Fee. A kickoff meeting with the consultants will be held soon, and staff anticipates that recommendations from the study will be taken to city council by the end of this year. The team also completed new objective design standards for residential development, and by the end of this year, the team plans to bring forward several zoning amendments related to housing and develop a procedure to monitor affordable housing development for all income categories. We are currently in Phase Number Four out of Five and developing the admin draft general plan. We're working closely with several city departments and soliciting collaborative feedback and details from our partner agencies such as CRPD, COSCA, FIRE, and Police. Since March of this year, we have focused on the remainder of the general plan updates. And looking forward toward the final phase, research for the draft environmental impact report will begin this year with a notice of preparation and a scoping meeting, with an anticipated release next year. We expect the draft general plan to be ready for release to the public late this year, followed by several months of public engagement, opportunities for feedback. And we anticipate the conclusion of Phase Number Five to occur with the adoption of the general plan by city council in mid-2023. And now I would like to turn it over to our communications manager, Alexandra South.
Thank you, Kristin. Good evening, Mayor Engler and council. I'm Alexandra South. I'm the communications manager in the city manager's office. And I want to briefly provide an exciting update on progress this year in the city's effort to respond, rebuild, and recover. We put forth an ambitious budget with a specific goal of over $20 million for rebuilding and reinvesting in the community. I'm happy to share that almost all of that funding has already gone out into the community. $16 million was set aside for housing and homelessness efforts. The city has already spent $10 million of that to purchase the Hillcrest site, which will ultimately provide affordable housing to many in our community. And $1.8 million was allocated toward Project Home Key, which Ingrid touched on earlier. $1.2 million was awarded and distributed for our one-time social services arts grant program, two of the greatly impacted industries over the past two years. 22 of those were awarded to social services nonprofits, and 17 grants were awarded to arts companies, including our three resident companies, New West Symphony, Pacific Festival Ballet, and Five Star Theatricals. $1.5 million was granted to CRPD for the construction of Page Lane Neighborhood Park, which is set to open this summer and provides another wonderful place for residents to enjoy the outdoors. $5 million was budgeted for reducing the city's deferred street maintenance. This enables the city to repave approximately 64 miles of streets this year. Our staff worked hard across all departments and with our partners like TO Arts to successfully get funding out into the community as quickly as possible where it would have the most impact. And this is something that should be celebrated. I will now turn it over to Jonathan Saret, Cultural Affairs Director, to provide an update on the creative economy.
Thank you, Alexandra. Good evening, Mayor Engler and councilmembers. It's my pleasure to provide you with an update on the work and achievements of our Cultural Affairs Department as a component of our creative economy. Our theaters remain our largest cultural asset and have seen a strong recovery through this fiscal year. After reopening in July of 2021 with physically-distanced seating in the Cavley Theater, our team has worked diligently to adapt to each new set of changes, to guidelines, restrictions, and protocols stemming from COVID-19. Throughout the past year, we have been focused on providing exciting cultural arts experiences with health and safety at top of mind. When the state lowered the threshold for indoor mega events beginning in September, our theaters were compelled to require proof of vaccination or a negative test result as a condition of entry. This was unknown territory for us, but our theater's team rose to the challenge and devised an effective process to generate compliance while continuing to provide the high-quality guest experiences our patrons have come to expect. Despite an evolving slate of obstacles, our metrics around attendance, ticket sales, ticket revenue, concessions, parking, rental fees, and more have all been trending upward since our reopening, which illustrates that we are going in the right direction. One of my favorite programs is the annual pop-up arts and music festival. This city-produced festival is presented with support and partnership from CRPD, TO Arts, the New West Symphony, Five Star Theatricals, Semado, and others. Through this series of free events presented at different locations around the city during the month of June, we have the opportunity to bring the arts and cultural experiences outside of the theater directly to our community. With no cost to attend, these events allow us to engage with our community residents in an inclusive and accessible way, which we feel highlights the importance of City Council Goal A. These events also provide us a chance to spotlight diverse cultures and to share their arts with our community. We were also able to secure nearly $800,000 in supplemental funding through the shuttered venue operators' grants administered through the Small Business Administration. These funds have enabled us to focus on the work of rebuilding our creative community, supporting our artists and arts organizations, and rebuilding the confidence of our patrons, staff, artists, and volunteers. To date through this fiscal year, our venues have seen 174 days of use. We have hosted 146 performances or events, which have been attended by more than 65,500 attendees and have generated more than $5 million in ticket sales. Next, I'll turn things over to our Sustainability Manager, Dr. Helen Cox.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, Mayor Engler and members of the council. So I'm here to give you an update on our Climate and Environmental Action Plan this evening. Early last year, council adopted a working greenhouse gas reduction target of 40% below 2010 levels by 2030, aligned with that of the state of California for development of our Climate and Environmental Action Plan, or CEAP. We've now completed our community greenhouse gas inventory through 2020, which shows great progress towards this goal. There's already been a 28% drop in emissions since 2010, primarily due to council's decision to enroll the city in 100% green energy through Clean Power Alliance starting in 2019. Last fall, the city was recognized for its comprehensive approach to addressing climate change with a Silver Level Beacon Vanguard Award presented by the League of California Cities. We continue to make good progress on development of the CEAP and have begun modeling work for projected greenhouse gas emissions under various strategies, including evaluation of emission savings and cost-effectiveness for possible building code amendments. We've drafted climate action-related policies for possible inclusion in the general plan and are working closely with the general plan team on integration of these into the plan. The CEAP will be developed in parallel with the general plan and a draft completed for review at the end of this year. This will be followed by another extensive phase of stakeholder outreach and engagement. The plan will be submitted for environmental analysis with the general plan and a joint EIR prepared next spring. This will facilitate CEAP strategies to be used to mitigate any general plan environmental impacts. Although we do not yet have an adopted CEAP, the city continues to pursue actions aligned with our climate priorities, including electric vehicle charging at four additional city facilities, four additional battery energy storage systems for energy resilience at city facilities and water pump stations, a recently completed solar carport sized to supply 100% of MSC's electricity use, and the development of an edible food recovery program. We continue to work with developers on integration of sustainability features in their designs and raising awareness within the community on environmental sustainability. With that, I'd like to introduce Jessie De Anda, our new building official and building division manager, who'll be updating you on implementation of the new land management system. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Helen, Mayor Engler, members of the city council, Jessie De Anda, your new building official. It's a pleasure to meet you and a pleasure to be here. This afternoon, I am excited to explain to you and share with you the information of the new land management system from Tyler Technologies called Enterprise Permit and Licensing. We are scheduled to go live on November 14th of this year. And as we will be able to see on the screen, we have a configuration process that is concluding, and we are beginning the user acceptance training process and staff training phases. These configurations have been completed for upgrades of existing technologies that currently incorporate application processing, reporting, financial services, amongst other existing various services. The software is truly a replacement and consolidation of five different software systems currently within the city's system and teams using to process payment, permit management systems, to use inspection request systems, currently the 311. The main star system will be consolidated all within this new system. The replacement of this current system will be implemented and be improving a 35-year-old system that was implemented in 1987 and is bringing our technology up to date and establishing a foundation for additional technologies in the future. This new system is comprehensive, robust, and sustainably customized software to create and improve focus on our customer service, process efficiencies through the various departments and divisions, and most importantly, to provide effective results for our community stemming from centralized databases and shared information within the city staff. There are many new services that the system is bringing, and one of the most notable elements of the system is an online self-service public portal where customers can complete application submittals, payment processing, online status checks, requests for inspections, search parcel histories, and begin the electronic plan review process for all departments. We are able to have customized dashboards based on the user role and our community customer needs, and more importantly, integrate with major systems like state databases from the contractors' licensing board. As we move into the next phase of the production, testing, and staff training, will definitely help focus our efforts in improving the customer service by consolidating and making more readily available our services online in a 24-hour, 70-a-week self-service portal, reducing these processing times of implementing workflows and efficiencies and streamlining our processes, allowing the community to take advantage of the new technology. Overall, improving communication and data sharing in real time in our community and amongst our staff is vital. In closing, on a personal note, I am very excited for this system. Building safety is definitely looking to take advantage of the technology that is being proposed and being brought on board. I would like to take a moment and thank you, the city council, for providing the support and direction to allow staff to all the numerous meetings necessary to implement this vital system, while in the middle of an increased workload demand in development activity, a key turnover in department, key department staff. It's definitely a compliment. It's definitely a complicated project, and we are committed to better serving our community with this system. We are on track to launch the next generation of technology within the city, and so we thank you. I'd like to introduce Deputy City Manager Gary Rogers to speak on the Campus Master Plan.
Thank you Jesse, Mayor Engler, members of the City Council. I am pleased tonight to give you an update on the Campus Master Plan. As you may recall, in 2017, the council established a Downtown Revitalization Ad-hoc Committee and ultimately endorsed the development of a Downtown Core Master Plan. The key elements of the plan included redesigning the Civic Arts Plaza to be more active and connected, expanding arts, cultural, and entertainment programming, creating an entertainment and retail destination on city-owned properties, providing opportunities for outdoor dining, public art, and beautiful landscaping, and lastly, to improve the walkability in the pedestrian environment. Out of this effort, the idea of a Civic Arts Plaza Campus Master Plan was established. In January of 2019, the council established the Campus Master Plan Ad-hoc Committee, and the design and engineering firm AECOM was retained. A plan for the Civic Arts Plaza was developed to accomplish the goals of the Downtown Core Master Plan. The effort included extensive reach and community participation. The council endorsed the design on February 25th, 2020. Unfortunately, the pandemic came onto the scene in full force weeks later in March of 2020. The changes that occurred due to the pandemic are still being realized, yet they delayed implementation of the Campus Master Plan. In the meantime, housing was approved at the lakes, which will positively impact the Downtown Core Master Plan and the Campus Master Plan. Earlier this year, the Campus Master Plan Ad-hoc Committee reconvened, and in the past several months, there have been several meetings with the committee and internally with staff. We are excited to be revisiting the Campus Master Plan with several goals in particular. First, to confirm alignment and effective orientation with the lakes, and second, to prepare sequential phasing possibilities that will revive the Campus Master Plan in an effective manner and that considers some of the broader shifts which have occurred as a result of the pandemic. AECOM has been engaged and will be developing scenarios, which we will review with the Ad-hoc Committee and then present to the City Council for consideration. We endeavor to return to the City Council with an update in early winter. Now I would like to introduce Carrie Mattson, our Deputy Finance Director, who will discuss the city's operating and capital budgets.
Thank you, Gary, and good evening Mayor Engler and council members. The city has long been a leader in fiscal sustainability, and these efforts continued with the City Council's adoption of a balanced two-year budget for fiscal years 2021, 22, and fiscal year 2022, 23. The adopted budget was developed with a focus of putting the city's funding resources to work for the community. As Alexandra highlighted a little earlier, the budget's framework was built around the theme to respond, rebuild, and recover from the unprecedented impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Deploying the funding received through the American Rescue Plan, together with the city's existing reserves in the General Fund built from prior fiscal sustainability efforts, the adopted budget provided strategic investment in affordable housing, homelessness, support of the arts and culture, economic development, and maintaining city infrastructure. The City Council's commitment towards investing in the city's, in the community's critical infrastructure was illustrated in the budget's capital improvement program that included 132 projects totaling over $110 million. Some project highlights that have already been completed include the installation of solar canopies over the bus and dial-ride parking areas of the municipal service center, new sidewalk and bike lanes constructed on Los Feliz Drive between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Caneo School Road, construction of a new pump station at the La Granada reservoir site, construction of emergency water interconnects with the California Water Company, and the rehabilitation of digester number one at the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. And some highlights of projects that are currently underway include the 2021-23 Pavement Overlay Program, new sidewalk and bike lane construction projects along Caneo School Road, Rancho Road, and Lawrence and Teller, an upgrade to the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant's skater system, and the installation of a microgrid with battery energy storage also at the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. Continuing with the city's focus on effective long-range financial management, as Drew mentioned earlier, staff is currently in the process of a comprehensive update to our financial strategic plan. Building upon the foundation of the prior financial strategic plans, this update will not only be analyzing the fiscal health and sustainability of our various funds, but will also identify and incorporate the financial investments needed to continue maintaining the city's critical infrastructure and assets on a long-range basis. And it is now my pleasure to turn it over to Nader Hadari, Deputy Public Works Director, who will discuss the transition of the city's new waste hauler.
Thank you and good evening. Yes, I'm here to provide a brief update on the citywide transition to the new contract waste hauler Athens Services. This has been a very visible process for the past year. It's one that has affected and impacted every resident and every business across town, and it was a very significant process, but I'm extremely pleased at the position that we are at today. The transition has been completed. The citywide transition, it was completed, the container, the container transition was completed earlier this spring with over 120,000 new residential carts distributed citywide and over 4,000 residential, um, commercial containers also distributed. A huge volume of customer service calls were processed throughout the transition phase, and I'm pleased to say that volume has decreased significantly now. The project has realized increased overall sustainability goals for the city. We're the first city in the county now to be fully compliant with SB 1383 with standardized containers and food waste collection provided to every single resident and business in town. Improved rates and pricing was a key component of the transition as well, and for the average residential property owner, they are realizing the savings of $150 a year, which equates to almost $5 million annually back into the pockets of the residents of Thousand Oaks. Strong outreach and communication. There was extensive outreach to the residents and businesses, obviously throughout this process, whether that be ads in the Acorn, direct mailers, social media, and the customer service hotline, and the opening of the Athens Sustainability Center on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And last but not least, new and improved enhanced services. We had our first, uh, we had our first free landfill day earlier this year on March 26th, and there will be a subsequent one coming up later this summer or early fall that we will be advertising for. We also have improved street sweeping, both in terms of quality and in frequency around town. And lastly, there's some new programs, one of which I'd like to highlight, which is the new Household Hazardous Waste Home Collection Program, which allows residents to be able to have their household hazardous waste collected from their residents and not require them to make a trip to any special location to do that. And we're finalizing the instructions and process for that shortly and look forward to be advertising that to the residents to take advantage of. So, thank you for that, and I will now turn it back over to Drew.
Thanks, Nader. And before we open it up for question and answer and dialogue, I wanted to introduce Melissa Ortato. Even though this is a non-budget year and we only do our goals every two years generally, been a lot of discussion this year on council's goal number one, and so wanted to have Melissa just provide a brief update on some of the activities that occurred last year associated with that.
Thank you, Drew. Hello, good evening Mayor Engler and City Council members. Since the adoption of your number-one goal related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, we are pleased that progress has been made to move the organization forward, including improvements to areas such as public engagement. We've been meeting with community groups over the last year or so to discuss ideas. Access for differently-abled individuals, alt-text are now included on our social media images, closed captioning is included on our City Council meeting broadcasts. Language inclusion, we're adding Spanish-language content to our social media, providing interpreters when needed at City Council members, and we have translated documents into Spanish and some transient information into Chinese based on the need there. Human resources recruitment efforts, we have piloted a blind application review process, and we have updated our applicant, or excuse me, our advertising practices that now include a reach to a broader applicant pool, and recreating recruitment materials that are more welcoming and modern. Financial investments into the community, several financial investments have been made, such as the purchase of the Hillcrest School property for affordable housing, contribution towards the community park at Page Lane, and over $1 million into our social services and arts grant programs. And of course, staff training is key. We have had hundreds of hours of staff training related to DEI. And finally, we have a volunteer staff committee that was formed to focus on DEI efforts both internally and externally. So on April 14th, the city hosted a stakeholder roundtable meeting right in this room, and it was led by our county DEI officer, Pin Zapanya, and 40 members of different community-based organizations, our partner agencies such as CRPD, TOPD, and CVUSD attended to have high-level discussions on disparities and inequities, and each table conducted a spot analysis and discussed the strengths, problems, opportunities, and threats within the community and developed bold ideas that they shared with the group. This was an important and exciting meeting for the attendees as it was an opportunity to share ideas from different perspectives, and it was an occasion to network and collaborate in ways they hadn't before. I'd like to share a little bit about what was discussed during this meeting. So some of the themes on the disparities and inequities that were raised by the group included housing, transportation, healthcare, racism, minimum wage, digital divide, law enforcement, city-elected officials, community attitude, disabled community, and the LGBTQ community. As part of the spot analysis, a few of the strengths of the community that were identified was that we are a caring community, highly educated, and a good school system. A few of the problems that were identified included that we are a city of extremes with respect to wealth and poverty. We lack representation at the decision-making level, and there's a Mayberry mentality. A few of the opportunities included organizing nonprofits to create a more collaborative community with arts, music, services, et cetera, teaching conversations with the ability to ask questions, and our youth is an opportunity, although they need the ability to stay in the community. Some of the threats included social media and disinformation, an aging population, and discomfort in speaking about racism and diversity. The group developed several ideas that touched upon all the themes previously discussed. A few that are in the city purview include more diversity on boards, committees, commissions, including planning and traffic commissions, communication of DEI efforts, and a DEI consultant or city employee focused on DEI, and city-hosted cultural events with booths hosted by different organizations. So obviously, not everything that was discussed at the roundtable is something that is under city control or purview. It is key to continue to engage our partner agencies and the community-based organizations as we move forward. Staff intends to continue the discussions and pursue areas where we can make improvements. If City Council would like to create further action on the number-one goal, you might consider a commitment to diversifying the members of City Council-appointed boards, committees, and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, city team. It was, uh, it's remarkable when you think about all the things that were shared over the course of the last year. That's a lot of activity, um, over, uh, what seems like not that long a period of time. We'd like to open it up now for Q and A, and I'll kind of try to moderate through that. I think maybe the best way to do that, Mayor Engler, is just to kind of start at the top with the workforce, and then we'll just kind of work our way, work our way down if there's any questions on any of the personnel or workforce components I talked about.
Very good. I think that's a good idea to have some questions here from our, my colleagues here. We also have six or eight people online waiting to make comments and questions, so we want to make sure we get their word in. But let me turn it over to my colleagues for any specific questions, and then we can talk, uh, once we get all our questions out of the way and clarifications, we'll listen to our public and then make and open it up to a more generalized discussion as well. So I know that we had one question from Mayor Pro Tem Jones earlier, and I wanted to make sure he gets it out.
Well, this is not a fundamental question. I didn't understand all the known and quite sure relative to building and safety. I wonder if you might tell me the name of that plan that begins with the word enterprise? And explain a little bit in more detail. Did you say that there would be service seven days a week?
So the actual software name or the company that provides is Tider Technology Company, and they make the software called Enterprise Permitting and Licensing.
Enterprise Permitting and Licensing.
Enterprise Permitting and Licensing, that's correct. So it's the product name, software name.
And how will the procedure work for the person that needs a building and safety permit to do something? Can he do it online? Did I hear seven days a week, or am I mistaken?
No, that is correct. It's intended to provide an online public portal through our website where folks can log in, create online applications, and submit them 24/7, seven days a week. At the convenience of the office, convenience of in the home, the reality is, yes, the online services will be available to be submitted and applied for throughout the entire time that anybody, that the system's up and running.
So if a person didn't get a permit until, say, late Thursday if we're not open Friday, or late Friday if we're open Friday, it could be like processed over the weekend online? Is that what you're saying?
And that's what we're exploring at the moment, as we start to configure this, understanding what permits can be automatically issued if possible. So some of the simple permits may be obtained online if that's something that we can handle and customize in the system as we configure this. That's the goal.
I bring that up because my son is a builder, and he, if he couldn't get, you know, inspection on Thursday evening, he had to wait till Monday to do anything.
Yeah, so the reality is it's going to be available to schedule inspections Thursday evening, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So that way, when we come back into the office Monday morning, we can continue process through anything that staff review is required for more complicated reviews.
Well, I think that's a great improvement. I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse, uh...
You can just keep it wide open.
Yeah, we got, we got open, so go ahead, Ken.
Uh, I, we're dealing with the personnel questions at this point, I understand, correct?
You, we can just take it wide open, whatever's the pleasure of the council.
Great, great. My, some of the complaints that I've heard from the various contractors, developers, builders, even architects and consumers, is that it's taking too long to get through the planning process. One year, two years, misinformation coming from one planner, then they come back and they're told something else. I was told that we are understaffed in the planning department to meet the needs, where if someone leaves a voicemail, they're not getting a call back for perhaps weeks, or it comes back as response via email, and not everybody works with email. And again, comes down to a staffing issue. Where are we in the planning department, and perhaps maybe Calvin Parker would want to elaborate on this? Where are we with addressing that need?
He's there to relieve you there, Jesse.
This is tag-team wrestling. There we go.
It's a beautiful thing. Good evening, Council. Nice to see you this evening. So as you may remember from some of our CD updates last year, we've made huge strides in hiring staff in the planning division, the community development department overall. But as it relates to the question and planning, we're in a much better position in terms of staffing. So we've actually cut down quite a bit on processing times that we saw last year, and as well as returning phone calls. Since we met and discussed the CDD in October of last year, we've implemented a new system of tracking phone calls as they come in. We've worked with various city staff to shrink or narrow the mailboxes by which messages go through, which actually helps us get to them quite faster than we did before. So thanks to the leadership that council provided and allowing us some consulting help, as well as filling positions, working with HR, CDD is in a much better position to address some of the issues that you mentioned just a moment ago.
One of the technologies that's used in the police department is that when an officer takes a complaint, it goes to detectives, and automatically that's entered into the system and a 30-day clock starts ticking. Detective's supposed to do some action on it. At the end of 30 days, if it's not resolved or moving forward, lieutenant comes down and talks to them, find out what's going on, so that way the public is... and talks to them, find out what's going on, so that way the public is served. Do we have such a tracking system so that way the public is informed as to where they are in the process and action is being taken? I had one architect, for example, simply wanted to add 600 square feet onto her garage. She submitted the plans as an architect of 30 years, waited for a response back from the city, which didn't happen for four or five months, made finally a phone call, got an email back saying, oh, here's the problem. And she came down, actually to council and to your terrific customer service, talk with her, and it all came down to that she was not notified that she had to do certain landscaping, terracing, whatever, behind the garage. And yet she'd been sitting there waiting for a response back from the city that never happened. Are we at a point where we can feel comfortable that we're not taking six years from the time plans are submitted to the times that they're signed off and built, as compared to in Florida, that they can do it in three years? And yes, the developers are telling me it's taking five to six years from the time plans are submitted to the time it's signed off for occupancy. Every year you wait, it's $17,000 carrying cost per apartment, condo, townhome, and house. That's $85,000 per unit over five years. And I appreciate the desire for efficiency because government is about 27% of the cost of housing. So if we want to reduce housing, make it more affordable, we need to be more efficient. In that example, for the architect who came in, where are we now with how long it takes once it's submitted plans to get back to that person to say yes or no, or make changes, or go ahead and proceed? How long is that taking now?
That's actually an excellent question. So just to provide some perspective in terms of background from what you laid out for us, here in California, we have a very different regulatory environment than they do in Florida, specifically as it relates to, you mentioned, the police department versus planning. We have very different processes and response times. And our processes and response times are a function of state law and Permit Streamlining Act. There's a similar statute in terms of building and safety in terms of plan check with life and safety issues. So it's a multifaceted process that is a give and take between the applicant and their consultants turning information around, as well as city staff plan checking for life safety issues and providing those comments. As with any process or any organization that provides customer service at a high level, there are going to be fringe cases. So what we plan for is the bulk of the customers we serve as opposed to the outliers, similar to a shopping center that provides parking based on their daily use as opposed to peak Christmas hours. So in terms of our response times, it is greatly reduced as a function of staffing up and with the help of council, providing contract help, that number has been cut down significantly.
I'm doing a three-question rule, if that's okay with you, Mayor. Last one is, again, I want to get a straight answer here, is that it was taking too long or non-response from our planners to someone who submits plans. The model I gave with the police department was not so much different regulatory, more of long of a customer service line, that if a planner is not completing their tasks within a certain amount of time, do you get a buzzer? Do you get notified saying, we've got a problem here because this one fell between the cracks? I got to go over and talk to that planner to make certain moves forward. It's just a management double-check. Is that in place with you or someone that will look over and make certain they're going through in a timely fashion?
Absolutely. We have a number of processes in place to track cases from the time that they're submitted, all the way throughout the plan check process, whether it's on the planning side or the building side. Again, and it's a function of managing expectations, there's a difference between the regulatory requirements that we have to meet per state law and what a homeowner may want or expect. So a large part of our job is education on what that process is and turnaround times. You met Mr. Deanda here this evening, our new building official, who's quite adept at process improvements. We're very lucky to have him, as he's mentioned, we have a new LMS system that adds additional reporting in terms of processing of cases that are submitted on the building side, in the planning side, which helps us better track when those cases come in, which allows us to be more responsive in the event that there is an expectation that may be unrealistic from the public that we have to address.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I might add on to that, and one, I think, important thing for the council to remember, because you've seen these things coming through the years, one of the biggest challenges for us is the continually evolving set of new state laws and basically removal of authority from a planning side and starting shot clocks, for instance. You might remember, we started shot clocks on solar, right? So you know what that, what that does is, you know, for folks who are getting solar might sound great, right? But that means you've, solar basically has to jump to the front of the line because there's a shot clock that starts ticking on solar immediately because that state law went into effect. Wireless facilities are the same way. Shot clock starts ticking. ADU law, the changes in ADUs, and I think that was one of the cases you were referencing, right? So we had our first round of ADU legislation, and then we had about two or three subsequent ones every year since, and dealt with varying little intricacies and components, setbacks, and how many ADUs you can have. And at the end of the day, it limits discretion. And that's what I was talking to Mayor Engler about, a neighbor of his that was chewing his ear because they have an ADU popping up next door to them. And those ADUs and those things have impacted our volume tremendously. And all of those varying components, they're just part of the stew that we deal with now. And whenever you get those shot clocks that are added in there, it overly complicates situation because we would like to be able to prioritize in a manner that hits in different ways. And so that's why we're constantly making our changes to our checks and balances, modifying our training, and then trying to staff up frankly with new, every one of these new laws that comes through, ADUs are not something this community is very used to. We had something like, you know, a small handful in the entire city. And do you know the number off the top of the head? How many we had in the last year, applications? It's...
I don't off the top of my head.
It was basically more than we've had in our history.
You're explaining maybe you...
Yeah, accessory dwelling unit. And so that means either a garage configuration or a backyard conversion. So whenever, whenever we have those changes in volume, it has impacts. So that's all just additional point.
Thank you, Drew. Yeah, accessory dwelling unit, colloquialism is a mother-in-law quarters that people would add on to their house, granny flat. One quick question, and I like the systems that I'm seeing, and I appreciate the online aspect that's coming, online in what, November, you mentioned it would be live? That will allow people to be able to do stuff from their home. From the public's perspective, they'll be able to instantly access that information, then?
That is correct. The new system will allow us to meet the public where they are, wherever that may be, whether it's a soccer game, the home, their office. It allows us to provide that service, as Mr. Deanda mentioned, 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Very good. And then from the city's perspective, is that to Kevin's point of giving us some systems in place to better track? Does that allow us to better track the information that's coming in and the permits are attempting to be pulled, if not pulled?
Absolutely. It allows not only for better tracking but better reporting, which allows us to figure out where those outliers may be just in terms of processing time or where a project may languish throughout the process, whether it be an issue that's raised by a consultant or a member of the public or anyone else in that process. As part of that, it'll allow us to better improve our development activity report, which is available now on the website, that will track cases as they come in, as they move throughout the life of the project from planning entitlement all the way through building permit. So that's available now, but the system that we're looking to in place, to put in place the LMS will help us enhance the ability of that function.
And just one follow-up question, thank you, Mr. Powers. One follow-up question. In terms of the timeframes to get a permit from, you know, idea to opening doors, I'm sure it runs the gamut because of complexity of different projects and everything else. I'm just thinking in terms of this project we'll be having coming before us in a month or so, which is the Kmart property that languished for so many years. When did, when was the city approached with this final plan? Was it three years ago? Do you recall offhand?
That's back when we were in the initial planning phases of the project, when they approached the city to begin to talk seriously about a project going in on-site. As you may remember, council gave the green light for a pre-screen on this particular project, believe it was early 20...
May of, May of 2020.
May of 2020.
So May of, May of 2020, when we did the pre-screen on it and that sort of thing? So we're...
That is correct. So between then and now, we've moved to a phase where we're conducting the environmental review and looking forward to moving to planning commission with that next week, I believe.
So roughly two years, that's since they came to the city with a plan that was something that we could look at.
Agree. And just to be clear, that two-year timeframe allows us to meet the state statutes that are required for a project of that nature, just in terms of SEQA and environmental review that has certain built-in steps that just by a function of state statute, various steps may take 45 days or 30 days. And there's a series of those throughout the process that elongates that period. So it's not just something that staff controls, it's something that staff manages in terms of meeting state requirements.
Thank you. I think that was my three. Mr. Powers, you had a comment.
I just want to kind of follow on points to what Mr. Parker was saying. One of the benefits of having the system is permit history, right? So if you have a piece of property, you're looking to buy a piece of property, you're looking to understand what's happened on a piece of property, being able to go in and pull that permit history is something that's a more manual process today that will be automated, which will be a real benefit and will there and save staff time. The other thing that'll be nice is a triggering within there. You wouldn't believe how many times you get applications where somebody comes in, starts work on something, and then disappears. And, you know, it might just be something simple, it might be something more complex, the architect may, they may fire the architect, it may go away. Those things languish. And so having a pop-up trigger, hey, it's 30 days here, it allows you to go back out, architect, hey, what's, what's happening? Are you done? Do we need to move this into a, to a different case file that is dormant or what? So that will be another added benefit.
Claudia, do you have a question?
I do have a question, but I'm wondering about the format. Is this an open mic sort of thing?
I was just saying, you can go any, any topic you want. We've got all the folks here that can answer, so.
I just want, I just want to make sure we be respectful of our people out there in the world waiting for their chance, so.
Well, that's why I'm asking and wondering. So the next one is going to be priority setting?
Yeah, that's what we'll come after.
Yes, my question was, is going to be about the town hall that we had, or the community roundtable, I should say, DEI, and maybe there will be an opportunity to mention that later on? Or should I ask that now? Okay. Well, first of all, I think it's great, and I'm glad that it went really well. And I wanted to basically ask, in conjunction with our number-one goal that we will be discussing later on, the possibility of moving or converting one of the current commissions to one that can be sort of a DEI roundtable that we started on April 14th. You mentioned, Melissa, there was, there was a question or request maybe for city or proposal for city-hosted cultural events, yes? Is this community roundtable that I hope will move into a more higher-level group, can they then request to have a unity sort of gathering in the community in partnership with the county? The reason I'm asking is because we've already had a meeting to see what can we do with, to really bring the community together later this year? And rather than having it be dictated by the county or the city, wouldn't it be nice if that came from that roundtable discussion?
Right, I think that's always a possibility, should council choose to set aside budget for something of that nature and provided that we have the resources to put that together, depending on the scope of the event. So that's always a possibility. I think I'm kind of going back to your question on, you know, moving forward with the stakeholder group. We consider this a beginning, you know, a journey. We do have a staff committee that is really dedicated and committed, and it's extremely, I was extremely pleased as to the number of folks in our, in our employee base who, who applied to be as part of this committee and are really dedicated to this. So I think we're going to have some folks that will be happy to help out with these types of efforts and collaborating with the community groups and our partner agencies to come up with ideas such as this that could bring and unite the community together. But of course, something, as you mentioned, would take a budget to host.
Of course. We'll have to make room for that. Thank you. Okay, that's it.
Kevin, you got another question?
Yes, Mr. Parker, where'd you go? Come on back up. Come on down. And you thought you got off easy. I'm glad you're so willing and smiling. Thank you.
This is the best part of the evening.
I conducted four, four focus groups last summer from developers, architects, contractors, and so forth to get their input on how we can make government more efficient. And I'm sure that's a goal of yours as well as all city staff, because we're here to serve the people. I was disappointed to hear the following, and I hope it's been corrected since, is that there's something called plumbing, mechanical, and electrical that needs to be evaluated on a project, whether it be a remodel for tenant improvements for an office building, suite, or a house, or a huge project like an apartment building. Years ago, I was told that it was used to be done in-house and was very efficient. It was done, it was turned over. If there's any changes, you can do it over the counter real quick. I've been told that the city now contracts with another company, another engineering company, and they pick up only on Fridays. So let me paint the picture here for you and the public. Every second you delay a project drives up the cost of the project, and it increases the cost of rent for that project to whoever's renting. So we always speak about affordability. This is an area that we need to look at. So let's say you drop off your plans to the city, and the mechanical people, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical have already picked up. So you're waiting another week to have those plans picked up. Then they go down to someplace, some black hole where they evaluate it, and then if they miss the Friday delivery time, you're waiting another week. So that's another two-week delay plus the time it takes to look at the mechanical. Then you have to do some changes there, which is another week, and then it may get picked up again. We're adding another perhaps month, two months onto a project. Some developers share with me on tenant improvements that because of the delay, that costs them sometimes $50,000, $60,000 in lost rent because that stayed vacant. And I'm thinking from a businessman standpoint, kind of an MBA kind of systems perspective. One, why are we only using one? Two, we have UPS, FedEx, US Mail, DHL that could be done, and many of these developers said they would be more than happy to pay for that kind of fee to go down there and have it shipped that same day. So you lose that week of perhaps missing the deadline. And I'm thinking to myself, if we only have one, why don't we have two or three, and why aren't they more local? So that way, if one's busy, we can use the others, more frequent pickup times and delivery times, or perhaps the easy stuff we can do internal, so it's just over the counter, they look at it, we're fine, sign off on it. The more complicated stuff, send it out. What's your take from a management efficiency standpoint on how to address this?
You know, that's a great point, and it's something that was an easy fix for us. So as I mentioned, council allowed us to contract with outside services in order to help process our planning applications and permits. Currently, we have two firms under contract to provide consulting contract services. So there's more than one there. Additionally, just in terms of pickup for those contract services, there are multiple pickups per week. One of the things that Drew and our HR team mentioned during our CDD update, as well as earlier here this evening, we try very hard to maintain ourselves as an employer of choice. So as we brought those CDD updates to you in 2021, one of the things that we mentioned is that we were short-staffed at that time, and that's something that we began to slowly remedy through that process. And being an employer of choice, that has aided us tremendously in meeting that goal. One of the positions that we're currently recruiting for is actually a plumbing and mechanical plan checker who also happens to do inspections. That's one of the 30 positions that Drew mentioned was vacant that our HR team is working on. So it's an ongoing process. So as the environment for development changes... So, as the environment for development changes, we maintain our nimbleness in addressing those issues as they may arise. So, wherever the pain points are, either for council or the public, we are quick to remedy that, remedy that using all the powers within our control. So, it's definitely something that's improved.
Excellent. Thank you. The next question, I got three. That's number two here, Bob. The second question is that I, I heard from one of the residents that they had a new air conditioning put in and had to pull permits, call for the inspector to come out, which was two or three days later they were going to come by. He's out in front of the house, the inspector walks up and says, are you the guy with the air conditioning? He says, yes. Show me the form, signs it, gets in the car, leaves. Never looked at the air conditioner, and the resident's feeling like this was a shakedown. Why did I pay this fee to make certain the work was done correctly? All they wanted was just get my money, and I didn't, they didn't even look at it. Why am I doing this? Another case, man's putting on a new roof, and we're not talking the shingles, we're talking about all the supports and so forth that needed to be redone. Talked to the gentleman, the homeowner. How did things go? Went well. He said the inspector came out, but funny thing is, never got up on a ladder to look at the work along the way. Just came out, signed it on the good name and faith of the general contractor that was putting it in. My question is, why are we paying the fees? Why are we asking the homeowners to pay the fees for an inspection when an inspection's not taking place? That's number one. Number two, why are we not bringing inspections to the 21st century? My point being is that all inspectors do is when they come out, is they look. They look around. Was that connected correctly? Were the white pipes connected, wires connected, whatever? You know, this thing called the smartphones got FaceTime on it, and I shared this last year, is that why do we not leave the inspectors back at City Hall? Contractor calls in and says, could you send me a Zoom link? I'm ready for an inspection. Zoom link sent over, the inspector communicates with the contractor saying, show me the outside of the house, now walk back, show me this, show me that, all while being recorded back at City Hall. So, you got documentation it was done and what it looked like at the time of the inspection. That, to me, is solid. Next, you made certain that, one, the job, or two, is the job was done, that they didn't just sign off and then jump in the car and leave and go to the next job. Third, which is the big one, is it makes it more efficient because you don't have inspectors fighting traffic, running around, two, three, four days later, some reported me, a month later, the inspector got out to the location to finally sign off on the job. You could have inspectors tripling their efficiency by using smartphone technology. Are we moving in that direction because government is doing it, other cities are doing it? Can we at Thousand Oaks take a serious look at using smartphone technology in this way to make it more efficient and not have to wait? And to, to keep Dr. Helen Cox happy, it reduces emissions and so forth, so that way we help with greenhouse gases. I'm just trying to help here, Helen. So, long story short, are we, can we move in that direction? Are we moving in that direction? Is it worth looking at?
You know, that's a really interesting point. I would love to follow up with either one or both of those homeowners to get inside information on their experience. It's kind of hard to comment on that specifically without that level of detail, but that's something I would love to address. One of the things that I mentioned in October of 2021, when we brought the CDD update, our building department conducted over 14,000 inspections last year. That's roughly 20, 25% increase over previous years in terms of inspections. We provide a quality service in terms of building inspections in general. In terms of using smartphones or other technologies similar with cameras, it's not appropriate for every type of inspection and every type of situation. Some inspections are more involved than others, and the level of detail required as part of that goes beyond what a smartphone can provide, goes beyond what you can see, you know, on FaceTime, for instance, in an inspection. Conducting a building inspection is a very complicated, and it, it, it's a profession in and of itself for a reason. Part of it is reviewing plans to make sure that they match what's going on in the field, and it requires the interaction back and forth between the two. In terms of how that relates to our LMS process, Mr. Deanda can help explain in greater detail how that may fit into LMS, and being the building official, he can maybe elaborate slightly on why video inspection is not appropriate for all situations.
I, I look forward to that conversation simply because other cities are using it, and I'd like to hear the limitations on smartphone, using that as your eye as compared to a human being there directing where you want to look for the vision.
Maybe Jesse can speak to it, because we've had some conversations about it. He's very plugged in at the state level, so very involved in what's happening on that.
So, so, thank you. And on two levels, one, looking at what the industry is doing from the building standards element and the California Building Official Organization, definitely that is something we're looking into, the new standards. Obviously, the technology is being used, how we can incorporate that into Thousand Oaks Way is definitely part of my review process here as I kind of start implementing with technology. The LMS system is a core function of that, and at the moment, we have already talked to Tyler Technology Company, and I, they, we understand that the video inspection services and technology software is in their roadmap, so they're developing that as well. So, combining the statewide industry standards with the development of the new technology that we can kind of marry together will help us really have the foundation to be able to establish something like that. There are a lot of intricacies, yes, as was mentioned by Mr. Parker. To do an inspection, it's touch, sight and feel. Cameras don't always give you that third level perspective, but it's definitely something that we could do for the majority of some of the simpler inspections that we do. Coming down to really learning how Tyler Technologies' software that's being implemented and going live in November, and how the roadmap of their development in the virtual inspection world and software technology can be incorporated into a single system would definitely make us more efficient and effective. So, when the customer hopefully gets a request in, we can quickly identify it's a virtual version of an inspection and take that service down the road. So, we're looking at, at that roadmap as well.
Thank you, Jesse. I, I appreciate that. Mr. Parker, I'll get with you afterwards to share with you the contact information, but I'll have to get their permission first, so that way you can chat with them and share that I am not making this up, it is real, and I bring that forward to you as a way of making us more efficient. My last question, if I may, is on the general plan. We've had a number of people, Mr. Powers, that have come forth and have made comment regarding people with disabilities and special needs, and that's not being incorporated into the general plan. And I am not clear, could you please tell me, what is the vision of the folks that address these needs and want that part of the general plan? I'm not clear as to what they are looking for, because I would more than happy to accommodate these peoples with special needs and disabilities. Where are we going with this? Is it part of it, or is it something else that comes after?
Yeah, I think what's being referenced is varying elements of the general plan. There's numerous elements attached to the general plan, and I think every one of those various components has some area that touches on accessibility, and whether that's in our built infrastructure, infrastructure, or our accessibility to public meetings and things like that. So, there are elements of that woven throughout the general plan, and those are being incorporated as we go through the draft versions right now.
Excellent. Thank you. Mayor?
Very good. I believe that Al had a question.
I think we're talking a little bit about staffing here, so it would seem, and I remember when I came on a few years ago, we were facing a impending retirement wave, and now that was some years back. Where are, where are we in that? Are we in the middle of that retirement wave? Have we gotten past it? Where, and?
So, we're, well, I'm going to, we'll pull up to show kind of where our data point is right now. You know, we're, we're an organization of about 400, so you can, can look at just the shifts that have occurred of those tenured over 20 years, being a fairly large part of our organization, over 40%, to now that number shrinking down very significantly. But we were prepared for that. We knew that that was, we knew that that was coming. So, you see, back in 2016, 41%, now that represents about 25% with those under five years of service combined together, I think that was 20, 30, 36, roughly 36%. So, quickly, you'll see within a short period of time, and I see HR Director Tim Giles coming up, very short period of time, that will be a majority of our workforce. And so, that is the challenge that we're contending with right now, because every one of those departures results in recruitment. If we've done good on our succession planning and we're able to hire from within for that position, that creates another vacancy below, and then we continue to cascade forward, and that puts a lot of, a lot of pressure on our HR team. Mr. Giles, anything to add?
Would you say our workforce is getting younger?
Younger and less tenured. They, they have not spent as many years with the city as we historically have seen. We, we've experienced a long period of very stable employment with the city and, and enjoyed the benefits of many employees who've been here multiple decades. That's, that's what this graph is, is designed to show you, that, that, you know, just six years ago, we had significant portion of our workforce that had been here for 20 years, which creates a lot of stability, a, a, a lot of history. People know why things are the way they are, and you're able to train people moving through that. You see from the, the standards that, that, that group of, of people who've been here over 20 years is shrinking and shrinking very quickly, and that's largely the retirements that you're talking about. That's, that's the great resignation that we, we continuously hear about.
What's the hiring climate like these days?
What's that?
The hiring climate. Pretty competitive?
It's very competitive. We, for some positions, most of our positions, we have large pool of candidates to draw from, or we are still, and employer of choice, people seek us out. Some of our positions, just the nature of the industry, there are very few people in those positions, and that's been some of the challenges with the Community Development Department in looking at bringing in people at a higher level, who, there just aren't as many of them around anymore. It, it is all people who are coming up, and you're looking for people who have less experience than we're used to seeing in, in the city. With our, our building official recruitment, that was a, an extremely competitive recruitment. We had a, a very high number of, of extremely qualified individuals that applied. We're very fortunate to have been able to secure the services of Mr. Deanda. But even as you look at that, with those numbers, many of the people that were in that pool were at a sunset of, of their career, you know? So, to be able to identify someone who's going to be able to come in and, and contribute on a long-term basis, to be able to address some of these longer-term issues that council's identifying, you know, you're, you're asking for solutions that take us years to, to fully identify, develop and implement. You can't be continuing to change the people that are leading that through the time that you're doing that. So, we want to secure people who are able to, to be able to commit it to the city for a longer period of time, and we focus a, a, a significant amount of effort in developing our workforce. We've, we've put a lot of effort into developing the talents of our, our employees, making them prepared to be able to move forward, to make them, where they don't have the, the colleague next door who's been there for 20 years, we're having to, to change that with the support that we can give them to get them up to speed much more quickly and to develop them into leaders for the organization so that they will be there on a longer-term basis, and they're ready then to step up as we continue to experience retirements.
Are the younger people demanding a changing work culture?
In order to maintain a, a competitive, be an employer of choice, we are having to, to change the way that we do things, and, and I think that when you look at government, particularly locally, we've led that. We, we have been the ones that are setting the standards, but we, we get outside of the government. We work i- i- you know, in industry as well, in, in looking at the talent development efforts, looking at the different programs and policies that we can put together for our employees, making sure the employees feel engaged, make sure that we have a diverse workforce, a workforce that, that is inclusive, that when an employee shows up, they feel like they belong. And, and having those kinds of, of sense among your employees gets them to engage that much more with the city. They become much more affiliated with the city, they're going to stay longer periods of time.
I appreciate you embracing our number one goal.
Yes, well, we, yeah, we were, we were there, we were seeing it, and it's, as I think we mentioned last time when we went over some of the demographics, we've been very fortunate that our demographics as a workforce mirror the demographics in the community. So, we're very proud of that. We continue to, to do that. We embrace that, but we want to take that a next, another step further. It's not enough just to have a diverse workplace, but have those, those employees, particularly of a diverse employees feel like they're part of the city. They're there, they're contributing, their, their contributions are valued. And so, we, we're really focused in on, on those efforts in, in bringing the workforce along.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
Councilmember, and one of the pieces I'd like to add to that is, when we talk about the competitiveness of the field, we've had a number of senior recruitments over the last few year, last year, 18 months, that we get to a final offer stage, and generally speaking, when we would get to final offer stage in, in other years, that there was no, no question we were going to close the deal, and we've had multiple occasions where that hadn't been the case. The, the agency they're in made a competitive offer to keep them. They may have been in another process at the same time, and so, when you think about the, the challenge with that, you go through a full-fledged process, can take several months to get through, you know, three-panel interview, reference check, full, and then you got to basically get to a place, and then if you don't have a number-two candidate, you're back in that again, and that, that is where it's just a huge challenge when we run into those situations.
Very good. I think you had, you had a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. I believe Maria Prescott used to be termed an ombudsman. Do we have such a person now, or does each department do its own ombudsmenting?
You're talking about generally for civic affairs or for specific?
Well, I didn't ever see Maria's job description, but she was called an ombudsman.
Well, Councilmember Jones, I, I, you know, sort of the, the type of organization that we have today, I like to, and I, I say this in all seriousness, it's, it's one where it's just a collection of ombudsmen. I mean, I, I'm, you know, and that includes me, you know, and, you know, anytime.
It includes five people sitting here.
Exactly, right? You know, you think about the waste hauler stuff, you think about all the stuff, it's, it's, you know, a cult, creating a culture of responsiveness and within the organization has always been a priority, and so, you know, when it comes to business issues, Hater Alawami is really the ombudsman when it comes to business issues. When it comes to, you know, issues regarding elections, that's Cindy and Laura, and they're constantly running to ground questions regarding elections. When it comes to business licensing, we have somebody in customer service that knows that and so on.
Well, you know, I want to think about online. I, I teach a class online, and I'm familiar with doing things online or in person. I frankly prefer in person. There's a lot of getting to know people and, you know, getting things done. Online seems so impersonal and cold, but I guess it certainly has its place. If I could get my students to turn on their cameras, I'd like to see sometime what they look like.
Sounds like an opportunity.
But I, I understand, I don't have the authority to request that, so I, I don't. But it, you know, seriously, I, for about 20 years, I was a consultant, and I dealt very extensively with our city planning and building and safety people, and I knew them all by name, and they'd been there 40 years, I think, John Prescott, Phil Gatch, and, you know, quite often, that, that is helpful in the sense that they understand. Sometimes you leave a meeting and you wonder if anybody ever understood. Like I leave my students on, you know, does anybody ever understand what we're trying to get across here? So, I think that, I think, I think it is helpful to meet face-to-face along with some things that can be done online, I, I believe.
Absolutely.
Sorry about the extension.
I, I could say some, something, but I won't.
What are you going to say? Get out of here.
We'll, we'll go offline, Ed.
Can I stay here?
I think we're, we're at a point now where if we don't have any other questions of staff on some of these items, why don't we go ahead with our, start our priorities? Because we do have some people out there waiting to speak on it as well.
So, what you might want to do is go public speakers, pull the public speakers up, and then we can jump into, what we'll do is pull up the priorities from that juncture from there.
Okay, we can go ahead before, before the presentation, I think, just in terms of, I know people. I think just in terms of, I know people have been sitting on their, their, sitting on their computers, I believe with their cameras on, Ed, I'm not sure. But they've been out there online. So why don't we call our speakers on our item six tonight, which are, is our study session on, on the goals and priorities. First, first person up is Kat Selm and she's on video.
Both Kat Selm and Roseanne Witt are not on Zoom.
Okay, if, if they get, if they hear us, we will get them back on. You said Roseanne Witt has dropped off as well?
That's correct.
Thank you. I got Clint Foltz on video.
Hello, my name is Clint Foltz. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and a member of the Caneo Climate Coalition. I'd like to commend the city for listing environmental sustainability and water conservation among the top 10 city goals and that completing the Climate and Environmental Action Plan is a priority for this fiscal year. It's also encouraging to see that addressing homelessness and the affordable housing crisis are among the city council's priorities. We at the Climate, the Caneo Climate Coalition would like to see the city focus on creating a healthier, safer, more climate resilient Thousand Oaks by evaluating all decisions affecting the lives of our residents and the municipal operations of our city through a climate and sustainability lens and by adopting a climate and environmental action plan that activates effective greenhouse gas emissions reductions and adaptation strategies that benefit our community for generations to come. We would also like the city to work with other purveyors and community members to significantly reduce outdoor water use at businesses and residential homes through multiple means, including significant education and outreach. The city should encourage turf removal and native drought tolerant landscaping that provides co-benefits to nature. The city should make modifications to city-owned parcels with excess turf and seek to collaborate on regional solutions that reduce future reliance on the metropolitan water district and that capitalize on localized water supplies, including expediting the Last Virginist Pure Water Project. The city should also explore sustainable groundwater sources, stormwater catchment, water storage and reuse, and gray water systems in large buildings and complexes. We are in the midst of a climate emergency and a mega drought. Let's make addressing these crises a priority. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Clint. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Faith Grant online. Faith, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor Engler and city council members. My name is Faith Grant and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. And I'm speaking about the 2022, 2023 goals, city goals. Also, as a member of Caneo Climate Coalition, a group of local residents who have consistently advocated for plans and policies that preserve and enhance our environment. I'm pleased to see that two critical climate goals, environmental, environment sustainability and water conservation have been placed on the city's top 10 goals. We commend the city for prioritizing these two goals. The IPCC's most recent regional analysis underscores the fact that our current climate emergency impacts everyone. Climate change threatens to destroy the foundation of our water and food security. Because we are in a climate emergency, CCC would further encourage city council members to take bolder steps and begin approving environmental recommendations and decisions proposed by our city's Sustainability Division in advance of a final approval of the Climate Action Plan, which may not occur until late 2023. While we await the final Climate Action Plan, we also suggest wording be added to the Environment Sustainability Goal, requiring all municipal operations of our city reviewed through a climate and sustainability lens. With regard to the water conservation goal, as Dan Drogen of Callejas Municipal Water District repeatedly stated in his April 26th presentation, climate change is causing our lack of water. As a pattern, the most likely will continue for the foreseeable future. We recommend that the city go beyond collaborating with purveyors and implement policies that require the use of gray water systems and new building projects and the development of storm capture systems. Again, thank you for adding Thousand Oaks to the California cities that understand we're in a climate emergency and in working to pass environmental policies to ensure a sustainable future for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Carol Shelton, also on video.
Good evening, my name is Carol Shelton and I live in Thousand Oaks. I am a single parent and two of three of my children have a developmental disability. I work three jobs and will never be able to afford to purchase a home in Thousand Oaks. Even with this overflowing workload, I spend my spare time volunteering for Adelante Comunidad Caneo, Thrive Caneo, Caneo Unido, and our local school district. I also volunteer for many county-level groups. I'm a renter, but invested in my community and making it a better place for those living on the margins. I'm a long-term renter and I live in constant fear that I will lose or no longer be able to afford the four-bedroom apartment we are in right now. I have three jobs and I will never be able to purchase a home in Thousand Oaks. Does that make sense? My boys will not have a place to call home once I am gone. Nobody is planning for children like mine. They will never be able to afford to rent anything here in Thousand Oaks unless things change. Families like mine are rent burdened here in Thousand Oaks. The bulk of housing being developed is workforce housing and unaffordable to so many of us. I support Project Home Key, but this is not the solution to the unhoused or homeless residents living here in Thousand Oaks. This project is for a very specific and identified group of individuals. Currently, 300 students have unstable, unsuitable, or no housing at all. What about these families? Can the city of Thousand Oaks do more than explore other potential affordable housing sites? Our community is counting on you to make bold moves to house those that require extremely low, low and affordable housing options. I'm a single parent. I'm responsible for ensuring the safety of my children. I worry that the social, racial, and radicalization and associated unrest this causes will escalate to violence. Our community is counting on you to do more for public safety than to address current crime trends to keep us safe in our homes, schools, stores, churches, mosques, temples, and synagogues. Families like mine are looking out for one another and we just want a safe place to live and call home here in Thousand Oaks. Will you plan for us? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. In the audience today, we do have Rosanna Guerra. If Rosanna could please come up, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Engler and city council members. My name is Rosanna Guerra and I'm here tonight on behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. As the Chair of the Council on Aging, I was invited to attend the city's DEI stakeholder meeting in April. I was encouraged by the communication and interaction that took place. Subsequently, the Council on Aging voted to support the city's efforts of diversity, equity, and inclusion. As older adults are the fastest-growing demographic, we would like to ensure that these efforts specifically and proactively take into account ageism, including but not limited to the areas of housing, employment, and transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosanna. Next up in the House, we have Kyle Rohrbach.
Good evening, I'm Kyle Rohrbach, mayor, council members, staff. Proud to live here in Thousand Oaks. And as you embark tonight in what is arguably your most important role as council members, I wanted to share some of the issues that I would like to see as priorities. And I'm going to start with affordability because it is one that is personal to me as at the top of every month, as I watch my bank account sadly drain to go to mortgage. It is in sacrifice to the investment that should be going towards my son's future. And I often am reminded that I have the privilege of being able to live here. And yet, I then remember that if I wanted to move to Thousand Oaks now and live in the same home that I do, I could not. I could not move to the city that I love if I wanted to right now. I had an opportunity to attend the Regional Economic Forecast featuring Dr. Fineup's incredible work. And it was made clear that this area is simply not affordable. We do not have enough housing here for people to live in. And this is a city that prides itself on its unique quality of life. And it's one where we have to recognize that this quality of life is only accessible to some. This also extends to our small businesses, which I know you know. And it is, is very apparent that they are struggling as they enter year three of the pandemic. Staying open is harder than ever. And the city should continue to do everything it can to ensure that they are provided the resources to remain open. They are the lifeblood of our business community here. We need to make the economy of small business a priority. Next, I would like to see Thousand Oaks take a fresh look at transportation. And I intentionally use that word broadly. There are so many innovative solutions that make accessing a suburban city like ours even easier and they are truly astounding, whether it's talking about raised and protected bike lanes, dedicated walking paths, greenways, or ensuring that T.O. transit remains affordable and efficient. We should be talking about all of it. And as others have said tonight, we must integrate climate change into everything that we talk about as a city. This is a city that has had more than half of its residents evacuated due to fires in November. It's a city that loses power anytime the wind blows. And it's a city that is going to talk about the most strict water conservation efforts in our history just so we have access to basic things like drinking water in our future. It is clear to me that a changing climate is the most important issue that our citizenry faces. And there is a lot that we can do about it, we are already doing about it, and it must remain a priority. I know that you all have a lot to think about tonight and I am grateful that you have taken the time to listen to these thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rohrbach. Next up in the House is Danielle Borja. Followed by Leann Holland.
Good evening, Mayor Engler and council. My name is Danielle Borja. I'm a Thousand Oaks resident and president, CEO of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm speaking tonight to express our support for a number of the proposed priorities for the upcoming fiscal year in regards to our local business community. One, the comprehensive general plan update. The city has spent extensive time on the general plan process to date, including the preferred land use map that was endorsed by the council last May. Completing the plan with all the elements will be an important blueprint for the city's future in the next 25 years. Two, continued investment in the biotech cluster. Expansion of our biotech continues to be a key strategy to strengthen our local economy while supporting existing businesses, including our small businesses. As we heard at the economic forecast, Dr. Fineup reported that the biotech was the only industry in the entire county that had growth. The 20-acre Alexandria campus is an incredible opportunity to create hundreds of high-paying jobs at a state-of-the-art campus on a lot that is currently vacant with no economic impact. Number three, solutions that reduce future reliance on the state water project. We encourage the city to work with water purveyors to develop more local storage for potable water and create access to non-potable water for landscaping to major users like our retail centers over the long term. Processing residential prescreens. Lack of housing continues to be a substantial challenge to our work, work, workforce. These additional prescreens could contribute to more housing units to help meet needs for our employers as well as our community members and help the city meet their arena numbers. And finally, number five, re-engaging in the creation of the campus master plan. As the biotech community continues to expand, creating this downtown area continues to be an important component of our future workforce envisioning themselves living in Thousand Oaks. On behalf of our chamber and our board of directors, we appreciate your consideration of these priorities that will support your local businesses.
Thank you, Danielle. Leann Holland.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, council members and city staff. My name is Leann Holland and I live in Newberry Park. I am the leader of Thrive Caneo and we are part of Caneo Unido. I am the parent of a child with developmental disabilities and I live with the constant worry of what will happen to my child after I die. The lack of affordable and supportive housing for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities is widely recognized as a national crisis in the disability community. People with ADD who rely on social security income make around $9,000 per year. It's impossible to rent an apartment locally on that income. According to a recent article in the Acorn from the series called "The Price of Paradise", the National Association of Realtors ranks Oxnard, Thousand Oaks and Ventura as the third least affordable metro area in the country. Around half of all renters in the city are rent burdened, which means they pay more than 30% of their gross income on expenses like rent and utilities. Moreover, rents have increased in Thousand Oaks by 19% since 2019, exacerbating the problem. My daughter and I live in a one-bedroom apartment that we rent. Though I do receive a small income as my daughter's home care provider, there is almost no chance that we will ever be able to buy a home here in Thousand Oaks, unless we win the lottery. Or unless the city changes course and prioritizes the need for housing at all income levels in Thousand Oaks. Would you please consider expanding your efforts to create more affordable housing by addressing the growing crisis for renters in our city? Seniors on fixed incomes are losing their homes and many others are facing the reality that there may no longer be a place in Thousand Oaks for those with median incomes, much less those with low or extremely low. Is this the price of paradise? Perhaps it is time to consider other options like rent control or mandating a fixed percentage of affordable units for any new developments, especially until the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance is put into place. I would also love to see a proactive strategic plan to assess local needs and address the crisis of the lack of supportive housing for people with ADD. My dream for my daughter is that she is able to live and thrive as an adult in the city she calls home, where she is attending school and learning to live as part of our community. I hope you are willing to consider adding options to your annual priorities that can make that a reality. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Last up, I think we have Linda Carl. Is Linda here? That's very good.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, members of the council. My name is Linda Carl and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I am the president of Adelante Comunidad Caneo and as such, I was invited to the community meeting on April 14th. I am pleased to see that some of the points that were brought up at that, that roundtable conversation are part of the priority plan. However, I still feel that the city could really do more. And the areas that I would really hope that the city will consider as real top priorities are of course the issue of housing. The projects that are being brought up are for identified populations at an income level that are much higher than other residents that are already here in Thousand Oaks. The low and extremely low-income earners are here already. And we know of, I personally know of many families that leave, two, three families per unit. That's unconceivable in a city like Thousand Oaks. Where are those renters going to go? If any given day their buildings where they leave currently are sold to new developments, they would not be able to afford to rent another apartment here, live, forget about buying. Transportation is an issue that is very personal to me. I am also the parent of an individual with mobility, mobility needs. And not owning a wheelchair-accessible vehicle myself, it creates a great burden having to depend on public transportation, on the paratransit services that in the whole county, and let alone Thousand Oaks, is below desirable. So transportation is a very big issue in this area. Housing, of course. Leave you with those thoughts and I hope you will consider them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carl. We had one written statement on our topic tonight from Carol Gorman. She says, I'll just paraphrase this, to avoid removing trees and adding a, a place where in our dog park. and adding a place where in our dog park where there's grass that the dogs can use. And it says to address people who idle their car for more than 10 minutes for 3HG. So that's from Mrs. Carol Gorman. Very good. Mr. Powers, would you like to go forward with our, our goals now we've had our input from our citizens?
So just a quick check in with councils, everybody good? Restaurant broke or anything? Are you? Okay. We are gonna now pull up a list of, of priorities that was collated in, based on the rankings that each of you have provided. So we'll pull those up on screen, and then we can just start working our way through as we've done in past years. And Mr. Mayor, you can handle that however you want. If you want to take some of them and batch them, talk individually about others, augment, you've got, you know, any approach that you see fit. There are, these are in stacked, these are in stacked order. So we'll just go through them all first and then, and then come back through. We've got homelessness, followed by water conservation, comprehensive general plan update, and affordable housing. Number five is... Yeah, seems like it's... I'll pull it up on my own screen here. Public safety, a variety of items attached there. Environmental sustainability, the residential prescreens, economic development. Public Works, C D D, infrastructure investments, and Campus Master Plan is how you ranked the 10, followed by cultural arts and the library, city internship program, signed ordinance, and campaign finance. I did want to share with the council that on items 13 and 14, that campaign finance is slated to come before the council next year for its regular consideration for CPI adjustment. At that opportunity, you'll have a chance to direct city attorney and city clerk to make any other changes or amendments you'd like to see in the campaign finance ordinance. I know there will certainly be discussion on the sign ordinance, but just for the council's benefit, we do anticipate that in an off-election cycle year that we would bring an update on sign ordinance to the council as well to seek the pleasure of the council based on current case law. So with that, we can take it, Mr. Mayor, however you want to start working your way through. You just let us know, and we've got staff to answer questions if there are any.
It seems to me that the best way to, I'm sure there's, just reminder to my colleagues that this is not, you know, when we, when we're doing this, we will wind up with a number one, number two. But that's not the point, really. We're just looking for a top 10 type approach to some of these very invaluable things.
Yeah, the importance of the exercise here, just to give you a sense of where the consensus was on more than 10. So we're, there, once it makes the list, they're all on the list and treated with urgency.
Very good, and they're all, they're all good, good items to have. We just have to make sure we are able to focus our staff's time on the different priorities that we have assigned to them. So I think with that said, are there, I may do this in reverse order, because are there, are there items that are not in this top 10 currently? Or are there items within the top 10 that we need to clarify better? So if there's items not in the top 10 that our, my colleagues would like to discuss, perhaps we should do it in a reverse order, and thereby, by default, the remainder ones are our top 10 priorities.
Yeah, and I might add as well, just in relation to the council's top goal, if there is a desire to have any additional component or piece of that, you can provide that direction related to that goal as well.
Very good, colleagues. Do you have any ideas of how you'd like to go about this? Like I say, I think going in reverse order will leave us with the top 10. So if, for instance, if the city internship program is something that we would like to move into the top 10, something will fall out, but that'll give us our top 10.
Bob, I'm actually looking at this thinking, the top 10 actually is a good list. And the others that, again, 13 and 14, side ordinance, campaign finance, that's gonna be taken up next year in a non-election year, so those can be removed. The only one in question then would be cultural arts and library and city internship. Do we want to move those in the top 10 and bounce something else out?
Well, that, that's the idea. If we, if we go to the top, the bottom four, if there's not enough energy on, on the dais here to move those forward, then, then we're left by default with our, with our top ones.
Just a qualification, when you say side ordinance, are you talking about political signs only?
Comprehensive.
You're talking about the whole sign.
Yeah, you can't touch one without doing it comprehensively.
Okay, and we're gonna do that next year regularly?
We're gonna have a conversation about the direction the council would like to...
I would agree with Kevin. I don't think sign ordinance and campaign finance need to be in the top 10.
And if I might, I was on the city internship. Assistant City Manager Hardy can provide a little bit of additional clarity on that as well, if you'd like.
Thanks, Drew. So the city internship program provided internship opportunities for local high school students at various work sites throughout the Canejo Valley. About two years ago, the program was put on hold due to loss of funding. And that funding was a critical resource to cover the cost of liability and workers' comp insurance for, at locations where youth were participating in unpaid internships and a summer school class. And so with the loss of funding and not knowing whether or not the grant funding would return, there, we had a previous staff member along with some other folks who began exploring other options. And since that time, I'm happy to report that there's a new and more comprehensive program, internship program that is being launched, and it's called the Career Hub. The co-founders of this organization have extensive experience in Ventura County's education and business sectors. One has experience in career counseling and employment training with youth. And then the other co-founder of the Career Hub was a global senior H R executive with experience in both industry and education. So we've reached out to the founders of this program and learned that internship opportunities will be available as early as this summer. And also, the city is exploring and learning ways in which we can participate in that program and bring interns to the city in the future.
So this is, this is a program that's existing now, run by a nonprofit that we are tagging along with? Or how does that work?
So it was a program, previously, city internship was a city-run program along with the school district and the Ventura County Office of Education. Now this is a new organization, a startup organization that has kind of brought together a variety of different resources and created a comprehensive program to provide internships.
Yeah, it's a nonprofits.
I'm sorry?
It's in the nonprofit world now rather than...
I believe it is a nonprofit organization.
Okay, very good.
Bob, I have a question.
Hold on, hold on, one second. Claudia had a, Claudia, go ahead.
Thank you. Was it about the city internship program? Okay.
No, but go, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll come back to mine.
All right, so thank you for that update, because that's something that we have been working on since last year. And I'm glad to hear that Career Hub is making progress, working with the school district as well as the county, I believe, for internship. So I'll, I'll follow up with the two ladies that you mentioned. Regarding the sign ordinance, and coincidentally, I received an email from a resident today who had been waiting for an explanation of the sign ordinance since 2020. And apparently, we didn't get back to her. And so I, regarding the sign ordinance, which has come into focus much more this year, how are we going to treat the rest of the year? I understand it makes complete sense to deal with that, and campaign finance is in an off-election year. But are we then to just disregard the sign ordinance that is on the books until we actually take it up next year?
Well, again, as we discussed at a prior city council meeting, after the Garner decision, city council adopted what's called a substitution clause in their camp, in the campaign, actually, throughout the entire sign code. Because as Mr. Powers indicated, you cannot just regulate campaign signs. That is content-based. So based on what I'm hearing, that's kind of the desire from the public, but that is not constitutional. So if the desire is to reduce the number of campaign signs, then we'll have to do a comprehensive update. For purposes of this election, what we have to do is we have to look at the entire sign code and substitute any type of sign provisions to campaign signs. So in the commercial corridor, if I'm allowed to have a banner, if I, if I can get a banner on my building advertising a sale or going out of business sale, under the substitution clause, that means I can also put, you know, a, a campaign sign.
Of course, of course. So the question is...
And that is, so for those purposes, that is how it's being enforced. There, there's also, you know, a lot of signs in our public right of way, which we have. I can't remember how many signs we've removed just in the last couple of weeks, but we do continue to enforce those. We remove any signs that are in the public right of way, because we actually have a distinction in our sign code between signs on private property and signs in our public right of way. So the substitution clause applies across the board to campaign signs, any other types of political speech. And we can, as a city, we have completely prohibited any type of signs in our public right of way, be it commercial speech, political speech, campaign speech, any type of First Amendment activity.
Okay, and so what we then do is, it, there was a provision 45 days. And is that going to apply to the November election too? I mean, what, how are we gonna handle with, with those signs? I'm only asking because there were so many inquiries and complaints. And, and is, if our ordinance is still the way it is written, which you say it could be reasonably interpreted differently, so are we then simply going to ignore that, is what I'm asking?
It's not a matter of ignoring it with the substitution clause. Remember, the substitution clause doesn't say you can put out a, you can exercise your First Amendment rights during certain periods of the year. That's, I mean, under the substitution clause, every person has a right to exercise their constitutional free speech rights 365 days a year.
Okay.
So our campaign sign ordinance says 45 days. After the Garner decision, and then actually after the new state legislation that defines when a campaign occurs, arguably, I can put a sign in my front yard on my property. 365 days a year. Because I, otherwise, we're suppressing the First Amendment.
Okay, so can we clarify that then on the website? That the way our ordinance is written is really not applicable? Because obviously, it could very well be that we will have signs for the rest of the year.
That's how every city is right now, by the way. It's not just Thousand Oaks, every city.
I think we need clarification there and guidance there, and then take up the whole sign ordinance next year in a non-election year.
And I think city clerk, I was looking over city clerk Cindy Rodriguez. I think she intends to provide that in the candidate's manual.
Exactly. The candidate's manual also, you know, there's always a provision in the candidate's manual regarding signs. So we'll make sure to clarify that with the substitution clause and with the recent, recent state legislature, changes in voting.
And it looks like, besides being able to put a political sign up all year long, you can also go much, much bigger than the little yard signs.
Under the substitution clause, absolutely.
So 32 square feet. Oh, hippie, look forward to that.
And, and, and again, I just, I want to impress upon the council, this is not limited to the city of Thousand Oaks. This is every city.
This is every city.
This is the First Amendment. So, you know, the First Amendment protects political speech the most.
Yes, it does.
Commercial speech has less rights. So if we are providing large banners for commercial speech, then we also must provide those large banners for political speech. Because that's the most important form of speech.
Okay.
Actually, I have, I have a couple of neighbors who have a political sign on their front lawn, as you say, 365 days a year. It's out there. So, I mean, for me, this is an area we have to tread very lightly. Very lightly. This is democracy in action.
Right.
I know some people feel that it's sign pollution. I don't see it that way. I see it as democracy. Democracy can get a little messy now and then, but people have a right to express their opinions, and we're in an election year. So we're gonna see some signs, but it's temporary, and the election's over, and the signs disappear.
Well, hopefully, they will, but according to the substitution clause, they can stay 365 days.
Well, that's true. I mean, as I mentioned in my beginning remarks, I have a couple of neighbors who have political signs out all year round. It's not related to campaigns here in the city. They're just general statements of their political views. But again, we gotta just tread lightly in this area.
To me, to me, this indicates the reason perhaps that we need to make a comprehensive look at this in an off-year when we don't get accused of, of trying to stack the deck one way or the other. We take a comprehensive view of signs. Right now, we don't have that option, I don't think, this moment. There's not enough time anyway to do a comprehensive look at things before we're right back into November election period and everything else. So let's, let's target this down the line a little bit to be, do a comprehensive view of it and decide signs across the board. Because as, as our city attorney Tracy says, you can't have one set of rules for one type of sign as opposed to another type of sign.
No, you cannot. And so residents have been asking about that since 20, I went through the emails since 2019 and 2020. So here it is, 2022, and we still haven't updated our sign ordinance.
Well, we've discussed this. We've discussed this. Every two years, we have this conversation. And again, Drew and I take our direction from the city council. But if there's a desire by the city council to do a comprehensive sign code update, we are more than happy to do that.
Very good.
So and just to remind the council, what that will look like next year is, is a two-step process. The first is an informational item to council, because you need to have a clear lay of the land in terms of what is involved. So when, once we start talking about comprehensive sign ordinance, you're talking about every business in this community. And you're talking about small and large and, and all of those pieces. And so there is, there's a lot to sort of take in. And so there's a couple of directions you can go in. And so before we just jump into, to, you know, a full board decision, which, you know, that a comprehensive sign update takes a significant period of time and has a lot of different components, and it has to have a lot of outreach with businesses. When you start talking about going out and enforcing, there's a resource allocation issue, there's all those different things. So we'll do it as a two-step. First, informational, provide you the lay of the land, give us the direction you want to go in. And then should council decide that you want to go that direction, we certainly think that would be a, a good prior, that would be a priority, would need to be a priority because of its level of commitment for the following year.
I think coming up next year, we could maybe give direction at that time. Right now, I think we have, as, as Kevin pointed out earlier, in terms of the things we have already kind of high on our list, general plan and, and community development and getting our biotech hub going, those, those are maybe a higher priority than some of the other ones at the bottom. So I think we had a question from Al, and then go ahead.
No, I just had a comment. I mean, I'm comfortable with the top 10. I think we really made a comprehensive list, and I think it reflects our priorities, things we want to do above all else. The, the four here on the screen, we can easily celebrate the library's 40th and not necessarily make, put it in our top 10. I'm sure we will. City internship, Ingrid answered that, and sign and campaign finance will be looking at next year. So, and the good thing is when staff got up and testified about these different areas, these top 10 are already being worked on as we speak. So we've got, we've got a head start on, on all of them, which is very encouraging. So I, I'm comfortable with the top 10.
Very good. Kevin, you had a question?
Yes, I want to return back to city internships. Ingrid, I, I am very much a supporter of getting our teens working so they have a paycheck coming in, they can manage their money, see how much is taken out in taxes, set savings for long-term goals. Is it possible that we don't call this a hard priority but a soft priority? And just know the city staff is working towards this, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a main priority?
I think I can certainly say, and, and I know our, our chamber presidents here, they've had dialogue with that group as well. So I think part of these types of groups, they rely upon commitments from a lot of different organizations, and we certainly want to be part of that. Now, what's key for us is tailoring that experience. So, you know, we're not going to overcommit, because if we commit, we want to ensure that it's gonna be a rich experience for that intern that's involved. And so we intend to be involved. And so we intend to be involved, so from a soft commitment standpoint, yes. And they're coming at this regionally, so Amgen is interested. We have a lot of, you know, really unique groups that are interested in being involved. And so I think that's what's going to make this really, to be able to go out and do a career fair and, and have a lot of different opportunities like that that are competitive will be positive.
When I, again, I also ask the city commitment, are we talking, they want dollars from the city to make this happen for the internship or logistics support? I'm not clear as to what they're asking of the city.
Sue, as a city, we could offer unpaid internships.
Actually, working in the city is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, actually working in the city. So what we've done previously is, we would send an announcement to the different city departments to see if anyone had opportunities for an intern, to host an intern for the summer, provide some of what those parameters would look like. We don't want interns there to file papers. We want it to be a meaningful experience, and so that's something we'll continue to do and support the career hub.
My discussion with the biotech hub owners, managers, they're doing some very innovative approaches to career options in that they want to have interns come in from the high schools and work there. So when they graduate high school, they have a job waiting for them. And I think that's a wonderful way to help our youth stop being youth and become adults so that they're, they're not waiting until they're twenty-six before they have a paying job. So I really support this concept of a city internship. Unfortunately, we've got some other ten that are ahead of that. And I have one more, but it's, deals with public safety. Mayor, do you want me to put that out there, or do you want me to wait?
Let's get, Ed had a question on something, then we'll get back.
Yeah, I, I wonder if maybe Kelvin or Helen Cox would like to comment. We've heard, you know, quite a bit about our current drought. And I note that some large apartment complexes are coming to us in the near future, two right away, which could be several hundred apartments. And I'm wondering, I don't want the staff to make council decisions here, but I wonder how much, if at all, we ought to take the current water shortage into effect as we consider these large apartment proposals before us.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's nice to speak with you tonight.
Well, you're not either Helen or Kelvin, but...
Very good.
Well, I don't think he is.
This is, this is a test.
Did you get their permission to?
I did. Helen, Helen actually left to go to the speakers forum tonight, and she was anxious to do that. So I said I would cover. I said, I'm sure there would be no questions. So that's what I get. Thanks, Ed.
You'll do, you'll do.
Okay. The state's primary goal, I, I just want to remind the council that fifty percent of the water use of any given residence is, fifty to seventy percent is outdoor water use. Clearly, as we've heard, the state's priorities are to provide housing, and they have set the priority to provide housing over the priority for outdoor watering. And so when we talk about those developments, they, you know, when you talk about more dense in developments, they're very efficient in water use, and they don't use a lot of outdoor water. So we're not too concerned about those, and the state's really, the state's really the one that's not too concerned about those. And, and we're just following their, their lead at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ed, I've been thinking a lot about that one question, and from my perspective, we have several, you know, we, we don't live in a vacuum. In other, we're not, we're not handling a water problem, we're not handling a traffic problem, we're not handling, we have a lot of problems to try to address. To me, how do you address a housing problem? We, we heard from folks tonight who came and testified during public comments, many of those were having to do with housing and the need for affordable housing and the housing directed for people with disabilities and that sort of comments. So we have, we, how do we address this housing issue in the most efficient way? The most efficient way from a water perspective is the multi-residence type, things that we have before us now. We'll be talking about a couple of projects coming to us in the next couple of months. So that's, that's, we can't, we can't divorce the problems. We have to look for problems, ways to solve problems concurrently. So how do you solve a housing problem and a water problem? You make it the most efficient use of water while providing the housing, in my opinion, but.
Bob?
That's a good analysis.
Actually, the, the least efficient way is the way that has prevailed upon our community for decades, the, the single-family home plan community, with the big lots and the big lawns and the big houses. That is not the way these days to conserve water. I'm not suggesting we, you know, alter our neighborhoods and make them any denser, but when you talk about housing, the, the most conservative way to use water, without question, is a denser housing unit, whether it's an apartment complex, condominium complex, or whatever. And as, as Bob says, we've got a housing crisis. We've had people testify in front of us for months and months and months about the need for housing, especially affordable. So we got a few projects coming up with an affordable component, and we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, thank you. Kevin, you had a question on our public safety number up there?
Well, I, I did have a public safety, but it kind of digressed into water, then I was gonna, that was gonna be my second. So since we're talking about water, and we have that chapter open right now, thank you, Mr. Jones. Cliff, you want to come on back up? I knew you were going to do that. I'd like you to fill in any details as I go through this. One is that I'm going to put on my water science professor hat and talk about water, and that what we're doing right now is two aspects. One is defensive, and that's conserving as much as you can, changing your lawns over, reduce the amount of watering you do, and so forth. The other is proactive. And the proactive side, as you and I have discussed, we had a terrific meeting last week at Cuyagus with the manager there and the assistant manager, and discussed options and choices to be smart about our water usage. And one aspect that we need to talk about, and John, feel free to jump in here if you wish, is that the water coming out of our wastewater plant is actually high-quality water that goes off into nature, and we have some commitments to the farmers there. But we're talking about perhaps providing what water they need for the farms they have that we have committed till 2050. My suggestion is we take whatever is left over and either treat it using what's called reverse osmosis, some of you may know it as desalinization, and then ship it up to Cuyagus to be treated again conventionally. My calculations with ten million gallons, less what the farmers take, we're probably looking at saving six hundred dollars a month, I'm sorry, six hundred dollars a year per household, which puts over eleven million dollars back into our community to stimulate the economy. That's one option. Another option is we take that wastewater and send it over to Camarillo that on June, they've got their reverse osmosis plant going online, and perhaps they can do it. Another is we have Los Virginas and their RO plant. Another is we could do our own RO plant here and do direct potable reuse. So there's a lot of options here. The other one is cooperating with Simi Valley, and they have a lot of water that they have to pump out of the ground, so they don't have houses floating down the street. And that goes off into nature. So maybe between Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, and Cuyagus, we're able to put an RO plant up at the plant, we just pump our water up there, they in turn treat it, put it in Lake Bard and bring it back again, and pay Thousand Oaks residents and Simi residents for the water instead of paying Metropolitan Water District. There's a lot of options and choices here, but we need to be proactive. We need to get our head out of the sand. In 2017, I approached council back then about answers. Fortunately, met with Cuyagus manager at the time, Peggy, Susan Mulligan, and then also Jay Spurgeon, who was your predecessor, and came up with a solution for redundancies so that way we don't get cut off from Los Angeles water in the time of an earthquake. And we've led to some very good things that are happening today. So I think we have defensive, and we also have to be proactive. Reactive, we're already doing proactive, we need to move forward, but my council members, we need to move forward on this. And we don't need to delay, because water's going to become more and more scarce. So, Mr. Finley, please comment on this.
Yeah, I just, you're absolutely right. And in fact, Cuyagus just completed their water supply alternative study, which came up with actually a hundred and forty possibilities for expanding the regional water supply, which, which we've realized, regional solutions are more cost-effective typically, and, and, and really serve everybody. We gotta, this is, this is a problem you can't solve by yourself. One of the things we are bringing before the council in the next month is a memorandum of understanding with actually all of our neighboring agencies, Cuyagus, Camrosa, and Los Virginies Municipal Water District, which even though they're the neighbor, they are in LA County. But yet, we are, we're, we're bringing this MOU together, and it's really the first time that all those groups have cooperated together. In fact, Cuyagus is just completing a project with an internet, interconnect for, with Los Virginies. So you're absolutely right. We are coming to council to get your authorization to sign that MOU, and we are, we are meeting with them on a monthly basis proactively to find solutions for our water supply.
I'd like to say I've really thoroughly enjoyed working through this process, and I want to acknowledge Nader, our brains behind this, with his engineering background, and thank you so much for the work you do with this. There are answers here, and we just need to find out which is best for the city and the region.
Yeah, Kevin, I think we shouldn't take anything off the table. And, and using this, this regional approach, I think will benefit us all, all, if you, if you pardon the comparison, all boats will rise on that tide of saved water. So I think that we can't, we, our, our goal, I think, mentions that, a lot of the different things that we're talking about here, as many of the things we need to look at.
And let's just be proactive with our council when they do come, come to light. Thank you, Mr. Finley. Chief, this one's for you. We deal with public safety here, and public safety, as you know, is near to your, to my heart, having been a retired reserve officer with the LAPD, I have eight years of service to them, still volunteer. So I kind of speak your language, but I don't speak your language, so I can get myself into trouble real quick. Having talked to officers for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department who are on bike patrol in West, West Hollywood, previous residents here who enjoyed the bike patrol here, LAPD who are on bike patrol, they say it gives them a certain level of communication with the business owners in the community that they are out of their patrol car, they're actually accessible, they can talk to the shop owners, the consumers, the residents, the people who are in the park. And it allows a lot of approach to the officers to report issues going on. Because when you're in a vehicle, when you're in a patrol unit, it's real hard to, oh, come on over, talk to me. Whereas you're on a bike, you stop, you go in, say hi to the shop owner, get to know him on a first-name basis. We used to have that in Thousand Oaks, and talking to the different business owners, they liked it. It was actually quite effective. I was doing some shopping for you the other day, because I'm spending city money here, and I, I took a look at the e-bikes they have that do twenty-eight miles an hour, and they charge for about eighteen hours, which more than covers a shift. I'm sure we could put lights and a siren on there if we needed to. But it's one where, that would be a wonderful option, but we do have regular pedal bikes, I understand, over, stored over at City Hall. What's your approach with policing? I'm not trying to tell you how to do policing, but I'm just giving you feedback from the residents, talking to other officers and myself in law enforcement, retired. I like bikes. Not exclusive, but it's another tool. What's your approach? What are your thoughts on bikes coming part of COPD?
So we used to have a, a bike team, as you have mentioned. That bike team was really effective at a time when we were experiencing some crime trends on specifically Thousand Oaks Boulevard, where the bikes were a great solution. Crime changes, we have different, and it goes back and forth. That team developed into what's called the Direct Enforcement Unit, and they're currently working on a whole bunch of range of projects that we're having, including homelessness as part of the problem they're tackling, neighborhood disputes, things like that. We have really two units at the department that we, that we use for really flexible means. One's the special enforcement unit, the other's the directed enforcement unit, which I just spoke about. We certainly, if we look at and see a need where the bicycle patrol would be effective, we would bring that back, and we have that ability to. What I don't want to do is pull them off important crime-fighting projects that they're on to, to be on bicycles where it may not be as effective for the current crime trends we're having. So that's something we watch for crime trends. If we start to have a lot of crime that, where bicycles be effective, I worked bike patrol in Camarillo for a long time. It's, it's very good for lots of things, but when your criminals are in cars, it's amazing how fast they disappear from you when you're in a bicycle, right? We, we, so, so there was a time on Thousand Oaks Boulevard where they were really, really effective. We can, we can look at that again and see, but from what I know right now, it wouldn't be, it would be a, probably an ineffective use of the officers to put them back on bicycles at this time with the crime trends we're experiencing right now.
Let me share an observation for you.
Mm-hmm.
Last year, I put together a presentation for the, at the police department about license plate readers and inviting business owners to understand that technology and how they can use that in their own parking lot, or in their stores, or whatever the case may be, to help reduce crime. As I'm walking up and down Moore Park, Thousand Oaks, and Westlake Boulevards, passing out flyers, talking to the managers and assistant managers, frequently, I got a comment about, oh, we need this. Oh, please, get this on board. And I would say, what's going on? And they tell me how they have, not weekly, but daily snatch and grabs, where they would pull up, pull up in a vehicle, run inside the store, grab a armful of product, jump back in the car and drive away. And I said, have you called the police? They said, why? Because if it's under nine hundred and fifty dollars, all we're doing is filling out paperwork, takes us off the floor, and nothing happens. And I said, interesting, because the police don't know this is happening unless you call it in. I know under bike patrol, you're able to sneak up on a drug deal going down, where you walk up behind him, and they don't even know, where did you come from? Same thing here. You've got the Jeddah gang that go into Old Navy here in the region, same thing, running to the store. Vons on Jan's and Moore Park had five thousand dollars worth of liquor taken out of their store, into the back of a car, and off they went. I'm just saying that bike patrol, I think, would be very effective in that area, and there's a lot more crime going on than the police actually know by my talking to the various business owners. And that's where the bike patrol could come in, where they can actually communicate like I did with the managers and assistant managers. Just a thought for you. We got more crime going on than what's being reported.
Very good, thank you. I know that one of my council members would like to make a motion, but I just wanted to ask Ingrid a quick question on our, what was a very important thing from last year, our DEI initiative from last year, and we had a great presentation tonight on that. Just because it's not in our, you know, visible in our top ten tonight, does that now go away, or how do we continue on with it?
No, absolutely not, Mayor. That remains the city councils and the city's number-one goal. So that will, we will continue to, you know, work on the efforts that Melissa has mentioned, and we will, you know, continue to meet with the community stakeholders, and we'll continue doing the work. That is your number-one goal, and we will continue to do work around that goal.
Thank you for that reminder. Appreciate it. Al, you did, you have a motion, I understand.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I want to thank staff for putting this list together. Takes a lot of thought, a lot of time, and it is a very good list, and I think it addresses all of our concerns. And I look forward to working on it in the next year, and I'm glad to see that staff's already got a jumpstart on just about every one of the priorities. And with that, I would like to move that we do adopt these ten items as our priorities for 2022 and '23.
As a reminder to the council, this will come back on your consent calendar for affirmation.
Right, we don't need to actually have a vote tonight.
We are advancing the ten.
We're, we're advancing the ten to come back for a official vote at another later meeting. Any comments from my com, from my colleagues up here?
Well, just one.
Ed, go ahead.
This is too specific to be a goal, but I'm very much opposed to some of the aspects of Senate Bill Nine in the state legislature, and I, if I were just one person, I would have that as a goal to either remove or revise Senate Bill Nine.
Actually, we'll be providing you... Actually, we'll be providing you some components to provide the monochrome of control we can around SB 9 at next week's meeting. So you'll receive an update on that. It'll be a great opportunity to ask questions, and we'll have staff to specifically talk about that. So perfect timing.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other, any other comments up front here? I'm just going to echo what Al said. Thank you to the staff, not only for your work presenting tonight, but for your work last year in moving our goals forward from where they were. We're already, we are going forward now with our, our highest priorities, and I'm sure there might be some that creep in over the year, but I believe that this is a good start for us, and I thank the staff for what will be their willingness to take this on. Very good with that.
So, Mayor, Mayor.
If you have some comments, Mr.?
Yeah, just wanted to take a moment to thank the city council and thank the team that was here in the community for their contributions and sticking with us through what was an incredibly busy year. It's an ambitious work plan for the year ahead, and look forward to, to jumping right into that, which we will do next week with a presentation on the drought, and then the subsequent meeting with a hearing on the Kmart site, IMT proposal. So the, the work will start very, very quickly. And just a reminder to the, just a reminder to the public that we do have a meeting next week, the 24th, so back-to-back weeks because of our changed schedule. And as I mentioned, we'll be hearing, we'll be calling the general election, we'll be providing an update on water conservation, and we'll be initiating a discussion on SB 9, as well as hearing some updates from the SCAG conference and the California Cities Summit.
Oh, Claudia.
Thank you. My neighbor was distracting me. I do have a question regarding item four, and we heard testimony from several residents this evening, and Mr. Powers also addressed it, is affordable housing that includes housing for those who have disabilities? And what would be the best way to approach that? We have only about two facilities or buildings in the city of Thousand Oaks which house people with disabilities, I believe.
Exactly. So as Cates Ringan was saying, it's, it's a different category of housing, right? Where, you know, memory care and other, you know, types. So it certainly can be included as a form of ranking, as she was saying, to look at those opportunities and where those, those needs exist. And I think there'll already be some mechanism as part of the general plan where that'll be looked at in terms of gaps and deficits. The, in terms of the projects that are moving forward now, obviously, it's a specialized type of, of service. And so we, Hater Alawami, our economic development manager, is aware of that. And so as we get inquiries consistent with that, it is something we're certainly trying to work through and facilitate, much as we do. We hear similar things about other assisted living type uses, and we do, you know, try to facilitate that.
SF Village is one of those facilities, and I think, is that not a converted hotel, motel for SF Village is, was my thought? It, well, we can...
Yeah, I don't recall.
I just want it to be on the radar for a further discussion. Maybe we can convert other motels into that sort of housing if, if possible. Thank you.
Well, very good then. I think we can move for our adjournment. We have another regular, regular meeting on the 24th. We don't have to vote. No, this is a referral to, we, we will come back with a consent item that will have us voting on a consent item.
Yeah, goals, norms, and all those are generally done on a two-year cycle unless there's some, some need.
Next, next year round. But the, so we, we will again get a chance to vote on this on a consent item coming up in the next few meetings, so we don't really need to vote on it tonight. So with that, we do have a meeting coming up on the 24th, and I will adjourn this meeting until that date.